All right, a public comment will occur during the public comment portion of the meeting and is done via raising your hand remotely or in person. During public comment, once acknowledged, please state your name and ward so that it can be included in the minutes and please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by policy B E D H. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
If the board is willing, I would like to move item eight C, the adult education presentation, after the consent agenda.
Okay, reductions? Okay, great. Also, just for the FYI for the board and for JAM, there is going to be a non-public. Okay, let's see. Public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? I do not see any public comment online.
If you speak, I wish to speak for public comment, please raise your hand online. There is no public comment online.
We will close public comment and reopen it at the end of the meeting. That brings us to our student reports.
Hi, good evening. So, last meeting I talked about our HOCO tickets, 20% of the proceeds would be going to Stevens High School. And after our total, we calculated that it was $700 that we'll be donating to Stevens High School. We council is working on day of work right now on the 21st. We have plenty of student volunteers, but we need more job sites, so we were wondering if you guys could help us spread the word about that. If any of your coworkers or anything needs something done at their house, that would be much appreciated, so all of our students can get involved.
Can you explain just a little bit more for people who don't know what that is?
Day of work, yeah. So, day of work is a day where student volunteers from our school, usually in groups of two to up to seven, go with their friends to houses in the community and help them with raking leaves. Last year, me and my friends helped somebody clean her garage. I've also done a lot of gardening for people, just helping people out with whatever they need, if they can't do it or just need extra hands to help.
Thank you.
We are also working with Hanover on two separate fundraising projects. One of them is a wellness walk that will probably be after AP exams. It's, we're doing it with Positive Tracks, and Positive Tracks is a program that helps you fundraise or spread knowledge about issues using sports. So, we are doing a walk that's either going to be from Hanover to Leb or Leb to Hanover. And right now, we're working with the police department, obviously, to make it safe. And it will be, right now, all we know is it will be by donation. And we also are trying to make this a reoccurring thing where we can join two high schools. So, we have electives from each grade coming to work together with, so, senior, junior, freshman, sophomore from each school to come together and hopefully continue this every year. Any questions on that one? We are also in contact with the Hanover Student Council to endorse a letter to Kelly Ayot. And the other fundraiser, which is in the works right now, I don't know much about it, but once I do, I will let you guys know once something active happens. Today, we met with some of the board members to talk about policies, to see how they're trending in the school, like the cellphone ban and whatnot. And me and Mirabella, the head moderator of Student Council, are creating a section for meetings to do check-ins on those policies, so we're ready to update you guys when you guys come back. That's all I have.
Great, thanks. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
Thank you for the update. For the day of work, I was wondering if you have, if you guys have reached out to the the PTOs for like Hanover Street and Mount Lebanon School and maybe the middle school to see if they, because I know that the Hanover Street PTO does a lot of workdays for the, like, the meadow that they're trying to create and the, there's like vegetable or there's like raised beds and stuff that need weeding. I think there's like a lot of projects that they could maybe use some help with, so that might be something to... I know they have an email address, so I don't know if you can reach out to them. And I was wondering also about like the Parks and Rec Department, because I know that they, the Lebanon Parks and Rec Department, they have all kinds of spaces that they do lots of things in, and they might love to have some help.
Thanks so much. I don't think we have reached out to those groups, so that's really helpful. I appreciate that.
I was similarly wondering, in regards to the day of work as a suggestion. I wonder if the Director of Communications, because that's a new kind of person in the whole district, might also help you blast that to make sure it's on every newsletter, to make sure it's on every social media feed. I don't actually know Jack's email offhand.
I'm guessing they don't have that many students.
Yeah, or I guess, I don't know.
He came to council meeting just recent, just last meeting, right?
Yeah, we mentioned it with him, but I'll probably email him and follow up just to make sure. I think that's a good idea. It's a surprising amount of students that want to do it. Maybe it's because we missed a day of school. I don't really know, but...
I'm also hopeful, because the Positive Tracks Wellness Walk sounds like such a good thing, that's also a good thing to kind of make sure that he's connected to, to help lift up this really awesome thing you're planning.
Yes, definitely. I'll tell the people on council that are working to reach out to him. Thank you so much.
Anything else? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, correspondence.
There is no correspondence.
Great, thank you. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the minutes from the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we approve the public hearing minutes from September 24th, 2025.
Okay, motion by John, second by Tia. Changes? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? One, okay, one abstention, Carrie abstains. Great, thank you. All right, we need a motion for the full board minutes for September 24th.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the September 24th, 2025 school board meeting.
Okay, motion by John. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tia. Any corrections to the minutes? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention by Carrie, thank you. All right, and then a last motion for the non-public minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the non-public minutes from the September 24th, 2025.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Tia. Any corrections?
Yeah, the date on this is wrong. It says the 10th, but I need to...
Okay. Great.
Okay. I own notes, I'm going to be very critical.
All right, any addition, anything else? All right, all those in favor? Okay, any opposed? No, any abstentions? Carrie abstains. All right, great, thank you. Okay, so that means we're going to jump ahead to eight C on the agenda, which is the Director of Adult Education presentation.
Great, thank you. As Colby makes his way up to the table and Tyler sets his presentation, I want to welcome Colby Price, who is our new Director of Adult Education. Through the strategic plan process, we, as a community planning group, learned that adult ed hasn't really been talked about at that school board level for a significant amount of time and really is in the past operated as a silo. So, within the strategic plan, we've included goals with adult ed and, you know, adult ed is an important part for our community. We've been serving our community members for over 25 years. So, tonight, Colby is just going to do a brief introduction of himself and what he's been up to since he started in July. Welcome, Colby.
You just need to press the button on your mic and it'll turn red, and that means it's on.
Now, okay, thank you. As Amy said, my name is Colby Price. I'm the Director of Adult Education. I've been in the role since about May, beginning of May. I took over for Deb Laffin, who retired in July. And previously, I lived in Madrid, Spain. I lived in Spain for 30 years, where I was an ESL teacher and also a director at a language school for many years as well. So, thank you, and if I could have the first thank you. This is our mission statement, and some of this I'm going to have to read from the paper. Some, that I can see, but some of it is a little small for me, so I apologize. Our mission statement to remove, let me get my glasses on, barriers and enable people to better their lives and to be together with businesses, schools, and their boards, agencies and volunteers, an integral part of our community. And if you will allow me, I'll also read our vision statement. So, this is the vision we have of somebody who comes through our program, tests out of our program, moves on, and that is to empower people to reach their full potential and together make a more prosperous, connected, and fulfilled community. All right, so this is the strategic plan as it pertains to adult education, and I'll just very quickly read through the year one action steps. Examine and share the current state of adult education in the district. Survey the community to determine needs and analyze the effectiveness of current programming and to explore options for supporting students ages 16 to 18 and alternative diploma options. This is who we serve. Most of our students live in the Lebanon area, but some come from as far away as Claremont or New London. I will not read through all of these nationalities, but as you can see, there's a pretty wide array of countries represented here. I will say, I was quite surprised when I first got here that there were fewer Spanish speakers than I had envisioned, but that's changing, actually, and I'd say probably 40 to 50% of our enrollment is now Hispanic students. And then the numbers here, 50 students attend English as a Second Language courses, another 10 work with tutors studying ESL, which is English as a Second Language, adult literacy, or preparing for the HICED GED and citizenship exams. And that number has since gone up, since it was printed. We now have three more people, so we're at 63. This is pretty typical, as far as the state of New Hampshire goes. This distribution is pretty typical. 60 to 70% are usually ESL students, so we are right about there. In the U.S., here are some statistics about adult education and the benefits of adult education. In the U.S., 59 million people have literacy skills at or below the lowest level, and 79 million have numeracy skills below that lowest level. People at the lowest level are four times more likely to live in poverty compared to those with higher skills. In New Hampshire, 12% of people are at that lowest level of literacy. Each year, $215 billion in healthcare costs are linked to low literacy. This comes in the form of emergency room visits, office calls, and prescription medication. Somebody at the lowest level of literacy tends to spend four times as much on prescription medication. Low literacy costs the U.S. economy an estimated more than $300 billion in lost earnings each year in the form of low productivity, absenteeism, crime, and more government assistance. And here is a very interesting stat as well. One in five people in the workforce are new to the U.S. Only half of those people are proficient in English, and 25% of them do not have a high school diploma. In New Hampshire, this is the difference in salary between those who have a high school diploma and those who don't. The difference is basically $30,500 if you do not have a high school diploma and $37,900 and some change if you do have a high school diploma. The state of adult education, there's a fair amount of confusion amongst, among the immigrant population regarding who is eligible for the program. Even, even those who could take advantage of our services are not. At a national level, upcoming regulations affecting eligibility may add to the confusion and limit our ability to reach more people. We have sought advice from the district legal team regarding some of those matters. And future funding is uncertain at this time. I will say, though, that in this climate of uncertainty, it's very promising that compared to the second quarter last year, we're about 30 students up in spite of all of this.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Can you state who is eligible? Is it, is it possible to clearly state that?
It's very difficult, because the federal government is actually debating that right now and going to hand down guidelines. In general, it's citizens, legal residents, green card holders. But we're still waiting for guidelines from the federal government about exactly who is eligible and who is not eligible. Yes?
Maybe this is a follow-up or a related question. Can you just define briefly, like, what, what adult education in Lebanon is? Like, what, when we talk about adults, we're the school board, I'm still, I've always been a little confused about, what are we talking about here?
As far as ages go, or as far as...
I don't know. The, the topic of the presentation is adult education and literacy, so I'm...
I think there's other slides. Let's kind of hold the question, because I think he talks about it in a couple of slides. What we're doing.
I, I think my question is more general and, and is more general than that. Like, are we, is this, you said, mention 16 to 18-year-olds and...
Yeah, so basically, we serve people that are 18 and older.
Okay.
We can serve people that are younger, but they have to be people that are not legally required to be in high school.
Okay.
So, anybody not legally required to be in high school and/or of the age of 18 can use our services. And that's anybody who needs English language skills, literacy, and to study for a HICED exam or a GED exam and to study for a citizenship exam.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Jessica, I know in previous presentations, we were talking about federal grants, so the Claremont School District did have the 16 to 18-year-old program, and they chose not to operate it anymore. So, that's sort of that gap. When Colby had mentioned, within the strategic plan, we're looking to see if there is actually another grant application, because as he mentioned before, funding in this area is uncertain. But right now, if you're 18, 16 to 18, there is a gap in services. So, our students would have to travel to Littleton or Keene to be able to get adult diploma service.
Okay, I will continue here. What we're doing, we started publishing a monthly newsletter to help better connect with the community, and we're also planning cultural events that will not only raise awareness, but will show the program's human side. And if I may, I'd just like to highlight three of those stories very quickly. Among the students we have right now, we have an Afghan gentleman whose family was helping the U.S. Army in Afghanistan, and when the Taliban took over, they were forced to flee and have been relocated to the Upper Valley. We have a Venezuelan woman who started her own aquaculture business that was expropriated by the government. She spoke out against that and had to flee, and she is now with us learning English. And we have an Indian woman who was recently widowed, and she had, she left her kids behind in India and came to the U.S. to try to make a better life for herself and her family. There are a lot of stories like that. Those are just three that I'd, I'd like to highlight. We collaborate with leaders of local communities, and by that, I mean, we've been in touch with the Haitian community, the Hispanic community, the Brazilian community. And we work with other agencies like SHARE, the Good Neighbor Health Clinic, Dartmouth Hitchcock, and the Upper Valley Business Alliance. SHARE is a grassroots organization that helps refugees relocate in the area. They often refer people to us to improve their English language skills. We do have some students right now from that organization. The Good Neighbor Health Clinic is over in White River Junction. They're a nonprofit group that provide medical care to the uninsured. They also recommend people to us. Dartmouth Hitchcock, we're involved in a very exciting project right now with some graduate students, medical students from Dartmouth, and they're developing a course to help immigrants navigate the healthcare system in the U.S. And we're a part of that. Our students are a part of that program. And the Upper Valley Business Alliance is, is a great resource for us. It allows us to have insight into needs and employment opportunities in the area, and we've actually gotten at least one job interview from our connection with this organization. What we're doing continued. After a spike in demand, we have opened up a morning ESL class that starts next week, two days per week, and further expansion is a real possibility at this time. We launched an initiative called Tutor Time, which features open enrollment, so students can ask questions and clear up doubts with a tutor. And those are not just doubts from the English class, those are doubts. Maybe they need help filling out a form, maybe they need to prepare a job interview, maybe they need to prepare for a parent-teacher conference. So, we have volunteer tutors coming in and helping them with those things. And we also just started a weekly conversation group, which diversifies what we offer by appealing to higher-level students who need to improve their fluency and ability to express themselves. These last two initiatives are led by volunteers, which helps us maximize our budget, so we're very excited about that. Where we are with the grant cycle, we are currently in the third year of a three-year grant cycle, and we will reapply for our Adult Education and Literacy Grant in February 2026. Gaps. The closure of Claremont Adult Education has left a pretty big gap in what students have access to, especially for the Adult Diploma Program, or ADP. The opening of the HICED Testing Center at Lebanon High School has helped greatly, and in fact, they just had their first person pass and get their HICED on October 3rd, so that's pretty exciting. Currently, students looking to study in an ADP program have to go to Littleton or Keene, as Amy mentioned. And during the next grant cycle, we hope to apply for an ADP grant in addition to the AEL grant, thereby increasing the number of people that we can help. In the fourth quarter last year, 36% of ESL students made a measurable skill gain, which is above the state target of 29%. Basically, what that means is when students enroll in our English program, they take a pre-test, and after 60 hours of instruction, they take a post-test, and they compare the two results, and hopefully, the post-test was higher than the pre-test. And when that is, that's considered a measurable skill gain. After exiting the program, more than 50% of our students are employed one year later, which is above statewide targets. You can see that well above the 32%. Several of our students run their own businesses and need to improve their English to better attend their clients. Current or former students are restaurateurs, work in retail or construction, and are LNAs. Just a couple of success stories here. We have a Caribbean gentleman who came to us unable to read and is now taking, he's preparing to take his citizenship test. We have a woman who was with us and went on to open a local restaurant with her family, and in fact, we have another student who just wrote to the teacher asking for a month off so she can open her second restaurant in the area. Several students who started in the beginner group have tested out of the program, and several have gone on to take courses at local community colleges. And I'd just like to end here. This is a photo from the last day of the fall course, well, the year-long course last year. Adult education benefits everybody. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Questions for Colby?
Yes.
Could you define HICED for me, please?
Yeah, HICED is a high school equivalency test, so it's very similar to the GED. New Hampshire is one of the few states in the U.S. that let you take both, so you could take the HICED or the GED.
Can you explain to me what the difference between HICED and GED is when it comes to employment for people?
For employment, there is really no difference. The different, well, it depends. Some places favor one over the other, but there's no real difference. The main differences are in the actual exams themselves. HICED has, I think, five subjects, GED has four, but incorporates the fifth into the, into one of the, the four. And one is all digital, one is paper or digital, the GED is both, so they're just slight differences. The GED kind of fell out of fashion and has come back into fashion, and as I said, I think there are 10 states. Vermont, for example, is HICED only, and New Hampshire is both.
I really want to thank you for this presentation. I think it's really illuminating all of the good work you're doing. I want to particularly highlight your benefits of adult education slide. I know going that far out of scope to say, you know, this is what it's like, the literacy and numeracy skills and the effects they have, but it is a really important reminder, particularly with that statistic, about 12% of the population of New Hamp, New Hampshire is at that lowest level. So, this is obviously a really critical program. And likewise, to know that we're at the end of that three-year grant cycle, I think, is valuable for us to know as we're moving forward in budget season. And I really like the success stories. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for Colby? Go ahead, Jessica.
Thank you for the presentation. This is very helpful. So, in terms of just getting more understanding and background, we're currently in the third year of a three-year grant cycle, and looking to reapply for the grant, it sounds like funding sources are a little bit, and there's a lot of changes happening. What happens to the programs that you're running if grants are not granted?
That's a very good question. So, right now, the way it's set up, the state grant is tied to the federal grant. So, the state matches the federal grant, and there's talk at the state level, what happens if we don't get the federal grant? That's, that's the least certain right now is the federal grant, right? I don't know if you're aware, but this money, this current year, was already, Congress already passed it, it was already earmarked, it was already approved, and then the administration pulled it back and said, "We're going to take a look at this and make sure it aligns with policy." And then they ended up releasing it. We were supposed to get it on July 1st, and we didn't get it till the, the end of July. So, the federal one is, is the least clear, and the state doesn't know whether or not in the future, if the federal grant disappears, if they can just give us the money that they would have matched originally. So, we could have a scenario where we have less money, or we could have a scenario where we have no money or very little money. And that's, there's, there's a pretty big amount of uncertainty at this time.
Do you recall what that federal money was that came at the end of July offhand?
The federal money, I believe, is $60,000, I think, $66,000, I think.
I believe that's correct. I think during our federal grants presentation, that was one of the light items there, too, that we were, we were waiting for, for them to release.
Yeah, perhaps it's a good time to step in and talk about, probably more than you want, so maybe not, but this is, I love everything you're doing outwardly behind the scenes. I don't understand some of the strings that are attached. Like, it's this super complicated program to run behind the scenes, and Colby's been awesome learning it. There are four funding streams for our program. There's a federal piece, a state piece. When we, when we apply for the money, never the twain shall meet. There's donations that we get, particularly from the Burn Foundation, we've done before. And then there's a small, $15,000 from the, from the general fund that you guys authorized a few years ago. The reason why that number had to be in there is because there's very specific percentages in what you spend on what administration or tutoring, or you have to have these volunteers. It's very regulated. So, there's four different funding streams, complicated to do all the same mission separately. The, the language program that we run now is to be paired with an adult diploma program, but the, the state basically, again, summarizing, split them up into us and Claremont a bunch of years ago, and Claremont fell apart. So, if we do the ADP program, which we're going to try to do, but it's a separate program, even though it's the same... And when you were asking, like, who's, what's this adult program serve, it's such a simple question, but it's so complicated, because...
It's becoming very clear that it's just as complicated.
If you need English, us. We can help you if you need English. If you, if you need adult diploma programs, until we get this grant going, it's like, it's messy, so... I appreciate, I, I think you need to know that there's a lot of different things going on at the same time. There will be some money in the general fund that you guys, you have to put it in there, or else we're not meeting the requirements. If we go to the ADP, there'll probably be more money we're going to need in there. Whether we need it, whether the program needs it or not, we have to show the government we're putting local money in. It's very, very complicated.
We, we, can we say some more about that? Because is this, so, in terms of like, so in order to run the program, Lebanon as the, I'm sort of confused about, like, are we the host of the, like, what are we?
So, that's, so it's a, it's a granted money, but it's another odd thing. Unlike Title I or IDEA, it's a competitive grant, like, the state, you, you put a program together saying, "We're going to provide services. Take our bid." So, we basically bid, but we don't bid against anybody else. So, theoretically, it doesn't need to be a school that runs it. It could be a, a local nonprofit, but I think everywhere in the state, a school is doing it. So, you say, "We're going to, we're going to provide AEL services, and here's our bid to do it," and the state grants it to it, and there's different regions in the state. In our region, it used to be much more decentralized, which is... In our region, it used to be much more decentralized, which is why both us and Claremont were doing it. But then the state, a bunch of years ago, six years ago, I think, divided the state into regions, and we and Claremont are in the same region. So our, our, we have to go basically south of Littleton all the way down to north of Keene. That's the region that they're going to be looking for a bid on for both AEL and ADP in June. So the one thing for the budget I just thought of is that if we're going to go for the ADP, I need to get together with Colby and Shay and find out what the contribution we would have to make is. So make sure we have a budget.
So we're basically the, I don't know, sponsor, partner, some, like, we're, we are, we are a necessary A, A partner.
Right.
It's, it's the school district, and it's often a district that does that. Is, is, that's our sort of function. But we're also saying that we provide the services to a pretty wide area.
Mm-hmm.
But we're the, so in terms of like, as a sponsor, those other communities are not also contributing to the sponsorship of the program that we're providing.
So similar, when the ADP, the Adult Diploma Program 16 up, Claremont, we would send down, like, we could go, our students could go there, and they would be providing those services. So it is challenging. We're, as we watch even our New Hampshire Department of Ed, they're restructuring within there, too. So there used to be a division of adult education, and now it's, I believe, we're not sure where it's landing and who that's going to be under at this time. So I think, Colby had spoke to, there's just the uncertainty, I think, just from the federal level and how New Hampshire's going to respond.
I have another question. Does, then, does the bid include the number of people we anticipate? How does the number of people participating in the program affect the way we structure this to request and/or receive the money that receives whatever the match is and whatnot?
We, we do have to...
I'm sorry, Tim. I don't, I was going to say, I don't mind saying, I don't know.
So yeah, what, so I didn't do the last bid, but there are, there are numbers each year, and the number goes up every year. So I think initially, the, the target was high 50s, low 60s. And this year, I think it's 82 is the number. So yeah, we have to state how many people we intend to serve.
Okay.
Colby's done a great, I'll just say, just observing, I know more than you guys, but I'm not an expert at all. Really, Colby and Deb have worked really heavily with Shay and my office to get the grant done together. So just observationally, like Colby has done, this program has had entails where, where it was a year ago. And I, I think it's...
Thank you.
Really cool to see those numbers go up. I would say we have a number of custodians that are, you know, they need English services, and they're, they're, they've enrolled in this program, so I think they're really...
They're starting on Tuesday. That's right.
We had talked, I think, when we talked about this maybe in our interview, we talked about that there is also, mentioned some of the community partnerships that there are, but there's like a lot of potential for community partnerships in other organizations and in other, I mean, we, for instance, you talked about the White River Junction Good Neighbor program, but there's a similar program in Lyme, there's a similar program in Moscoma, like, places that are already in our sort of sphere that could be benefiting from this as well. So it's great that you've already started to establish those relationships, and I'm sure there'll be more going forward.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's something, that's a goal I have, is to expand that, that network of, of connections and partners.
Great. Any other questions from? Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Bring us back to Superintendent Update 8A.
All right. So I just have a few items to update you on, some things that have been happening around the district. And so first, I think I heard a conversation about some traffic concerns around Prospect Street Extension. So I've been working, actually, the Lebanon Police Department contacted me, and they've been receiving a lot of complaints about speeding on the Prospect Street Extension. Actually, both the principal and I, at that time, when we met, we had not heard those complaints. So they asked to have a meeting with them. So they had discussed that they're going to do a traffic study up in that area. We've also have a paraprofessional up walking the students to school. In the long term, we talk about exploring the possibility of adding a bus route up there. So instead of those kids walking, we would have a bus route there. But after speaking to our transportation director, the bus stop would have to be by La Plant Road, and we would still have students walking. So it wouldn't solve that issue. And then I've asked facilities to cost out some other options. And once that's completed, they could possibly be included in the CIP. So I know the police department is doing that traffic study, and they are working potential some solutions with the Department of Public Works. So I can update you on, as that progresses. Tonight, we'll get an update from school care. So we've been working with our legal, and you've received several communications from me. And we've set things, sent things out throughout the community, and people are aware of just what issues that we are facing. In terms of community engagement, our SAU staff have been out and about. So we've had SAU staff at the Open House, the Pep Rally, Hannover Street Singh. I was able to participate in Fall Fest at Mount Lebanon School. Unfortunately, I was not able to get in the Dunk Tank because of the drought. So maybe next year, they'll get to dunk me. And then I was able to attend several homecoming games at the high school. So I just want to thank everybody involved, the students, the faculty, coaches, and family for making these events such a success. And thank you to Jack for being out there and promoting all of them. Our, in terms of district communications, we are preparing for winter weather notifications. At the end of the month, we are going to do district-wide tests for our snow communication system to make sure families are receiving those messages. So you'll receive a message about the test coming in October, and hopefully, we don't see that snow too soon. Career and Work Ready Skills. So Karen Dubois taught three classes on work-ready skills to students in the STEM Internship Course, and I was actually able to co-teach one of those sessions with her. So it was great to be able to work with some students as they go ahead and do career and work-ready skills. Transportation. As you know, we are down a couple drivers. And we, as a leadership team, had met together to discuss strategies for recruiting and retaining bus drivers. One of the strategies was to use the Facebook ad feature. So we're probably a little behind time by using it, but I'm pleased to say that someone called today who is already a bus driver, already have that CDL license, and said she saw it on Facebook ad, and she is going to apply. And then I also conducted a training session for our bus driver department, and I actually got some more feedback to bring back to our team about what they like working here, what they think could attract more people from working here. Or one of our strategy, strategies is working out with our existing staff to see if anyone is interested, especially our coaches, to get a bus driver license. And I'm working with my district team, so we are looking for several of us potentially in the future to do the bus driver training, including myself, hopefully leading by example. I want to make sure we have a deep pool of bus drivers available. I know, scary thought. It's going to be a slow course for me. But I, you know, I think you can just get as many people as possible available, just in case of sickness. And then finally, my update, just a reminder, I am attending the Innovation Conference, Lifted Conference. So I will be there during our October 22nd board meeting, but I will be participating remotely that evening. And that concludes my updates. If you have any questions.
Questions for Amy? Great. Good to hear about Facebook ads. That's great. Late than ever, jumping on that.
Yes, who knew?
Facebook. They do. All right. All right. That brings us to, if anybody else, Tim's update, business administrator update.
Good evening. We're in Chapter Two tonight. Review of the CBAs, some knowns and unknowns, and CIP. So in the budget, you'll see personnel costs. The LSS, which is Support Staff, they will, their costs will be in the budget with no increase because it's a separate negotiation, as you know. Lebanon Education Association, we're in year, we're budgeting year two of their increases. That'll be 3% to the grid. Everybody know what that means?
Sorry, what's LSS?
Lebanon Support Staff.
Great.
Paraprofessionals and custodians.
Does everybody know what he means when he says 3% to the grid?
All right. So there's a grid of, there's a grid, and you can, and the CBAs are all online. There's a grid that has, at the cross top, it has bachelors, bachelors 15, that means bachelors plus 15 credit hours, bachelors plus 30 credit hours, masters, masters 15, masters 30. So there's six different levels you can be as a teacher. And then down on the left, there's steps one to 18. So if you come in, run out of college, for the bachelor's degree, you'll be on bachelor's step one, right? And you can go all the way over to masters in 30 credit hours, all the way down to 18 years. So if you're old like me, and you've gone to school, got a master's degree and 30 extra credit hours, you'll be at masters 30, step 18. That, so that, each, between each step is 3%. So if you're a master's, I mean, a bachelor's one makes a certain amount, master, bachelor's step two makes 3% more than that. When I say 3% to the grid, I mean that whole grid. You take the grid for one year, the most, the first number goes up by 3% and everything builds up. What, the point of that is, if you're bachelor's step one this year, next year, you're bachelor's step two, but step two is now a new number, is that the bachelor's step two number has gone up. Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I, just because I, I found this very confusing when we first came in, and it's a lot to absorb, but I feel like the, a thing that is useful to remember is that they do add. So each year that you are a teacher, you get an addition, you get a basically a 3% raise every year, every year. Then, this is, the, the 3% to the grid means that, explain how that works.
The whole, between each step is 3%. So if the grid didn't change, it was the same grid every year, and you had $50,000 this year, next year, and there was only one grid, next year, you'd be $50,000 plus 3%. But the whole, that $50,000 number, the next year, the whole grid moves, so that $50,000 base number turns into $50,000 and 3%. So when you go to step two, you're going basically 6%.
6%.
The whole grid goes up 3%, and you move down a step, up a step, or whatever.
Everybody, in addition to their step increase, is getting a 3% raise on top.
For whatever raise we negotiate.
Right, right.
For the one that...
But this year's 3%. And I only say that, it's important to me selfishly, because if you look at a particular style or line, and you're like, well, that's more than 3% increase, or there's a lot of different variables, including the teachers, but the grid moves 3% to pay. I was calculating someone today who's going to go for masters 15, step 17 this year, masters 15, step 18 next year. It's like a $5,500 rate for that one step, because it's, the whole grid moves, too. We, we'll look at it more during budgeting. I just wanted to say that. The Lebanon, I need to change this, is...
Sorry, Tim.
Sorry.
When you're talking, so when we're looking at the budget, the piece that we're negotiating is the percentage that that grid moves?
No.
Okay.
No.
That, I'm like...
Sorry, sorry.
This, what, the example I just gave you is Lebanon Education. That's done. It's already negotiated in year, I'm budgeting year two. For the Support Staff, they also have a grid, but it's way different than that.
Yeah, so, go ahead. So the, Tim, you're great, and I love how you talk about all of our monies.
I'm confused.
And I'm very grateful for you. You also have so much information in your brain that I think it's hard to... So for those of us who aren't Tim, the, we have unions that work for us, or that we are in partnership with. And their contracts are negotiated by the PNN Committee, and then the full board either approves them or doesn't approve them, and the unions also. Those are, they're part of the budget, but they are not, but they are set. They're in agreement between us and the unions, and then the voters have to approve what we have come up with. So they're kind of included in the budget, but we don't get to talk about them as part of the budget. When we get to the budget part, like this fall, the union contracts are not actually, they're sort of part of the discussion to the extent that we are in active negotiations on one of them. But if we aren't in active negotiations, they're just stuck down in the budget, and we don't get to talk about them. Does that make sense?
Then your other question, I think. I think, so, yeah, right. So part of the, the way that, and again, I don't actually know if this, direct me if I'm wrong, I don't actually know when this started. But we have always had, since I've been on the board, always had the jumps. So there's always a, there's always a raise, go up a step. So it's usually a year of service, right? You're always going to get a raise for your year of service. In addition to that, there is another raise that is part of the negotiations with, with the union. So some years, most years, some years it's been lower, some years it's been higher, right? That, that changes, the, the sort of step number, yeah, the, the amount that you're going to get, because now you're working here for 15, or 16 years instead of 15, 17 years. That stays pretty constant, but there's always a, that's what they call a step, there's always a little bump, because you now have more along than this already. And if you get a degree, and that you get a different bump.
Go to a different, you go to a different column of the grid.
Yeah. So what we are negotiating is the additional part on top of that.
Well, we are negotiating the full contract, which incorporate, which is the whole, we're negotiating the whole thing.
We don't usually investigate the grid all that much. We do a little bit of the grid, but the grid doesn't change as much as the percentages of the full thing. Okay.
Sorry. I don't mean to be confusing nor give you too much information. I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
The secretaries or the administrative assistants is the third one. They're in year four of their contract, we're budgeting, much simpler. It's a dollar per hour for each person. And the Lebanon Administrative Group is the principals, assistant principals, athletic director. They have a much simpler system, too. They're, they're in year three, and it's 2 and 1/4% to their current pay. That'll all be in the budget that you see.
I'm sorry, I was whispering, I missed LAG. Can you tell me that again?
I'm sorry.
Lebanon Administrators Group.
Sure, yeah. Principals, vice principals, athletic director, one group. The next page, just, I have been, I'm running out of room because I've been here so long, but I, I just started, the year I started, between 2015 to this year, the increases according to the warrant article, you can see through '26, '27, $7.3 million has been added to the budget for teachers' wages. This is just facts. Support staff, $1.9 million through '25, '26. I didn't say '26, '27, because we're negotiating that.
Elementary question. So when I'm looking at these percentages, you're listing next to that. That's what, that would be like the X percent from the 3% I was looking at earlier for LEA, where that's the kind of extra.
Right.
And you'll see, as he's included in here, which is super helpful, in some years, like on, under LEA, in 2019 to 2020, we created, that year, they created the step 18. There hadn't been a create, a step. So there's, that's when the, that's the, that's affecting the grid.
So when you get to step 18, that's it. You cap.
Right.
Fascinating question. Yes, but no. So for example, in the teacher's contract, in the LEA contract, there's now a, what do we call it?
Yeah, well, two things. One, you stop at step 18, but that grid goes up every year, so the number for 18 still goes up. And once you hear your second year on step 18, you get an additional $1,750.
We call it a longevity bonus. So, because it's not a, it's not, you don't get any more steps after 18, but we do now provide a longevity bonus after that.
Per year or one time?
No, every year.
Each year that you are here.
So then you get just a flat?
You get, your step goes up.
You get a dollar amount. Yep.
Your step goes up, and you get $1,750.
Got it.
Tim, can I ask a question? So this is essentially the add to the budget by each of these negotiations, right?
Right. According to the warrant article, not, so I went off the warrant articles, which is a, a projection in the future.
The answer is yes, Tim.
Yeah.
Okay. And then it, um...
Well, I don't want you to go back in the budget and say, well, that didn't actually...
No, 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 he's not gonna do that. He's, go ahead.
So this also takes into account, like, if, if we added a teacher too, so it's not like normalized by number of teachers or anything like this. It's just the set dollar amount.
Right.
Thanks.
School care rate increases, next, it's next slide, thanks. These are just the rate increases we've had, uh, from the fifteen again. The total healthcare expenditure increase from FY sixteen to FY twenty-five was two point, just under two point six million dollars. Projected increase for next year's budget is sixteen percent.
Yeah, can we pause on that for a second? And everybody look at that number, nice and long.
This has nothing to do with us, and we can't negotiate it. So, that is...
It has a great deal to do with us, and we need to be thinking about it a lot.
We're not setting that number, that's what I'm saying.
We do not set that number, but we are subject to the consequences of that number.
Yep.
And you can notice, there were two years right around COVID before, there were no rates, they're called premium holidays, right, Tim? Where we did not see a rate increase because there was money in their reserves. And why we're seeing that build back now is that their reserves are lower. So...
Well, I don't wanna, I'm confusing everybody, I don't mean to. The premium holiday is a little different than that, but we did have no rates those two years. Well, I'll talk a little bit more about premium holidays during the school care.
I'm sorry, I had one question on that slide. Can you expand why solar is a, a factor impact on this slide? Solar at MLS and LMS, is that like a positive factor?
I think that's the next slide. That's the next slide.
Oh, okay, great.
I didn't mean it as a factor, I meant it as a good thing. Next slide, please. All right, so other things outside of, um, people. Again, these are, these are just things that you have to, that are in the budget, maybe good, maybe bad. I think it's good that the New Hampshire retirement system sets their rates on a two-year cycle. We're entering year two, so there's no increase to the New Hampshire retirement, nor, nor decrease. It actually has gone down sometimes, but no increase, it'll be the exact same percentage. Fuel, obviously, we, when John and I are talking about what we're putting in the budget, we make our best estimated, uh, best educated guess on fuel costs, but I am proud of the fact that we are oil-free now. We removed the SAU oil tanks a few weeks ago. So, uh, the whole district is either pellets or propane. Uh, water and sewer, we have to pay water and sewer, we are budgeting, done budgeted eight, that's correct, right, eight percent? Eight percent increase on water and sewer. Again, that's a, it's an estimate. We're usually pretty accurate on what the increase is. For electric, uh, I'm just telling you that I try to fix our price as much as possible, our, our supply price, we're fixed at twelve point three cents, which isn't great, but it's not too bad. Um, we do have solar at Mount Lebanon, Lebanon Middle School, that, um, I'd like, you know, we're supposed to get, we get credit, I won't say we won't, we don't get credits, but we don't, mostly we're saving by not spending. We're not really getting much rebates or anything from, from the solar, but, um, we do have solar that to reduce our electric rates, our electric usage. And, uh, distribution varies by rate structure. So, meaning that it's hard to know exactly what we're gonna pay to imagine where you draw, where you draw the energy, but we budget an increase every year. So, part of our fund balance at any year, we hope, is if we beat our estimates on fuel and electricity. Unknowns affecting the, the budget, healthcare increases, maybe this is a known, but I have it here as unknown. Um, probably gonna budget twenty percent for Health Trust. Health Trust is handling this, um, issue with assessments differently, and so it leads to higher premiums, but we only have just the administrative assistance on Health Trust. So, like, eight, nine, ten people, so it's a very, very small number. It could, we could budget a hundred percent, and you wouldn't really see it. Uh, retirements and track changes, uh, that will still, they'll be, what I know of will be budgeted when you get the budget, but there's a, a timeline to sign up for retirements and track changes that goes into December. So, um, it's a little unknown, but it's usually ninety percent sure by the time we have our budget meeting. Staffing changes and open enrollment slash legislative proposals, I don't really, that's the biggest unknown. Like, I don't, really don't know, if you ask me, how is open enrollment gonna affect our budget? I don't know, maybe Amy has a better idea, but...
I think it's still unknown at this point with the, um, there's lots of legislation that's being proposed. I'm sure Lo will be very busy at the end of the month, um, in terms of things that are coming down the pike for us.
So John's gonna join me for the capital improvement plan, if you have any huge discussions. He's the awesome expert on this, and I appreciate him coming in, he was feeling a little under the weather earlier, but... Um, so, the capital improvement plan is, under Justin's leadership of the financing facilities, is really taking a leap forward. So, um, we, we started off last year with, I think, a really good plan. It's just reformatted and, and more detail, especially. So what you're gonna see in the budget coming forward is anything that says GF, at least in the initial budget presentation, is gonna be in the budget. So I don't know if you have any questions. And if you go to the capital improvement plan online, and you see those links, those are live links, you can go and you can see the detail of everything that he's talking about.
Uh, Tim and John, I, since we have three new board members since the last time we went through this budget thing, maybe just kind of providing an overview of kind of each school, the project.
This slide is a good summary slide, but it's not in the packet, I'm sorry for that. Yeah. So for twenty twenty-seven, you'll see, there's a total of one point one million dollars across the district in cap reserve funds, or a cap improvement plan project. One million, as this is set up now, one million from general fund, ninety-two seven, C L means capital lease, so if we did the pro, if we basically, basically a vehicle, we would lease it. Um, do you wanna talk about the total from each project type?
Yeah, sure. So, this is on?
Yeah.
So, the project types are split, basically. Um, mandatory, the definition is relating to health and safety or legally required, maintenance, conservation of existing assets or structures. Replacement is replacement or improvement of obsolete facilities or assets. New services, expansion of facilities, service area, new structures or addition, or multi-faceted renovations. There's some gray area with some of these projects, there's, you know, the categories can work for more than, you know, it could, you could apply two to, to one project, but it's a general kind of breakdown of different types of projects.
So the idea behind those color coding, obviously, I think it's good news that we don't see anything that's mandatory, like, the building's gonna fall down if it's not done, but it gives you some, uh, ideas of, uh, you know, as you're going in the budget, sort of stuff to talk about, you know, if there's a, we're not saying that all that one point one million can't be discussed and burdened and arbitrated, but that's what we're going in the budget with. Jessica, I don't wanna, maybe Jessica thinks they all gotta be done.
Well, no, I, I think it just, just to give a little bit more, and I, please, John, and, and correct me if I say something wrong, but I think, looking at this, the twenty twenty-six column, that's the budget that we have already, that's the done one. Um, so that's what we approved for this upcoming year. Um, the twenty twenty-seven column is the, is fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, so that's the budget that we're coming to, that we're talking about this fall. Um, and I think that, just so you guys have a little bit of history on this, the goal of having a capital improvement plan that is seen, you guys have seen versions of this document, when the Johns come through, and it's had pictures and whatever, like little stories about like why we need to do certain things. Um, I think the idea has basically been that we have that document out five years, twenty thirty-one, I guess, at this. And, um, the idea is that there are some expenses that are really big, and we need to, that instead of, um, just sort of like being shocked when all of a sudden we need to do some costs, you know, a thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars, we should probably know coming, and be able to plan appropriately. So that's what the document overall is intended to do. And the goal is also to give lots of transparency toward and to look for, um, and then in each year, see kind of how the, the one thing I don't, I don't love about this view in the future is that I think rarely would wanna look at just this year. We wanna sort of see, like, what are, like, what are they thinking for twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, so that, because capital improvements are of necessity, big things that cost a lot of money, wanna be looked at. So I think the things that are in twenty twenty-seven line have been discussed multiple times, they've looked at really carefully by the director of facilities, by our business administrator, um, which is not to say that we don't still pull things out of that plan in the budget, that we don't still talk about them, but I think that it's important that the board kind of see this as a planning tool, and a, a tool for discussion. If that makes sense.
Question about the last table, I'm just, the total, maybe a misunderstanding, so clarification, total appropriated, like, we have, for each of those categories, we have to spend that amount, or, or that amount is available for each of those categories?
So each project is assigned a different project type. When we get to the next slide, you'll see next to each one, so that's just a breakdown of how much is being, um, what's the dollar amount associated with each project type?
I think we'll, we will change the word appropriated, as a business administrator, actually I caught that before, like appropriated means...
Not appropriate.
You guys have approved to spend the money, so we'll change that time, term to like, estimated cost or something.
Sort of, yeah, I think that, that's the idea, is that like, and is that, my memory is that from this chart, the total appropriated is actually, um, across the five years.
Yeah, that's correct.
So those numbers, that's part of the reason why the chart is a little misleading, because those total appropriated numbers are meant to give you a sense of, across five years, the, you know, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars that's, that's being requested for twenty twenty-seven, is out of two point six million that's being sort of looked at as being important for M L, for MLS across the five years. Does that make sense? Did I say that right?
No, yes. And I'll also add that, in the total column, we're still building the CIP out. Um, we're trying to get our asset inventory completed, so we can really get a full overview of where everything is. So you'll see, like, those yellow lines aren't matching, they will match when this is complete, it's because it's still at work in progress.
But it's all estimated, these are all estimated appropri, estimated needs.
At this point, yeah.
Yeah. And, and there's more to add, and there's things beyond, really twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, that's still need to be filled in.
And there's inflation.
Yeah.
And I, and again, I do wanna really compliment John and Tim for all their work with the lift project, and done a ton of work with their, on this, and I think it's a really valuable, uh, planning tool for, thank you guys.
Just one caveat, I would say that I made the command decision to cut it off at twenty twenty-seven, because I was focusing on the budget year twenty-six, twenty-seven, so, uh, I didn't envision like a bigger CIP discussion, so we need to restructure how we do this.
I would, I would get the feedback that I'm also interested in what that means for the plan. I, I like that we can see that twenty twenty-six faded, so like, in the future, if you wanted to present it with this window, with, but with an additional slide, that is the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, twenty, you get it, but that we can always see, particularly because the twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven will be accurate, being able to see that when we look at the future year would be really helpful.
I do like the, um, John, just the distinct, service replacement, maintenance, uh, mandatory, that's very helpful, which we've never seen before, so I appreciate that, um, visualization of that, because I think it does become really easy to say, huh, we don't, you know, we don't need to do this, but if it's like required by law, or if it's going to be a maintenance thing that we're going to continually do, that makes, um, discussions easier, I think.
And I, I wanna thank John and Tim too, just being amenable to feedback. I know, we had met with some PTO from Hanover Street, and we were just talking about playground structures, and that kind of brought us up, that, you know, looking at replacement costs, they are considerable costs, and so that is once, something that we'll add to the CIP, um, and it's something that we'll need to continue maintenance on.
Next slide. So here's what I was referring to before, um, this is, I really meant this is a visual tool, like, I'd like you to go on that CIP and click on those blue links and see what we're referring to. Um, the projects for, these are, it's that first page broken down by school. So this is Mount Lebanon, and then you got the middle, and, uh, Mount Lebanon, Hanover. I don't know if you, I can read through them, or?
Our Hanover Street didn't print off on our slide, so I know today, our printer was, our administrative office was very busy trying to print slides today, because we just, um, John was able to provide updated numbers, so, I apologize, but it looks like it...
And we'll talk about it more as we...
Yeah. You'll get a full updated CIP.
Some of these things have been on here a long time, like library, ADA reconfiguration, just so you know, like, I think, I think it's important to note that we've had a CIP of some sort for a while, but not very useful, and some of these, just so we're not just throwing things at a budget, like the ADA reconfiguration has been on the CIP since before I got here, and it's not that it's not important, but it's actually, it's actually, what I'm trying to say is an estimate to the board, like, trying to be, trying to be good and reasonable in what we do, so, um...
I think that's one of the reasons why they just, kinds of projects, there wasn't really participation about this at all.
I agree.
It was just like a big, long list.
I agree.
So having it prioritized and delineated by type change, very important.
And I think one thing to, we may wanna say a little bit more about that, and if you guys go, if you do click, um, into these, or if, you know, you go back into your packet and you see one of the presentations that these guys had done, um, you'll see on each, there's a page for each of these, um, proposed projects, and, um, uh, they do say on each page, it'll say, I think, like, man, you know, which of these categories it falls into. Um, I do think that it's important to know that, like, mandatory versus maintenance versus replacement, like, the mandatory term is used in very, very, very limited and specific situations, so I think it's important to know that, like, that's, it's, it's not one of these, can you flesh out, like, what mandatory versus maintenance, the difference between those a little bit more? Because I think it can sort of sound like, well, if it's not mandatory, then it's optional. But I think we wanna sort of, can you give some, like, an example of one of those, like, how those, you just, how you distinguish between those and giving the categories?
Yeah, so for example, like, um, under Mount Lebanon, we don't actually have any projects labeled mandatory for twenty twenty-seven, which I guess is a good thing. Um, for twenty twenty-eight, I have custodial closet and bathroom ventilation upgrades, so, uh, we had like our city five-year health inspection, and he noted a couple of the custodial closets don't have, like, ventilation. And he said, you know, it's not something you need to, like, we're not gonna shut you down and flag this, but like, build it into your five-year plan. So, it's on for twenty twenty-eight, it's labeled as mandatory, it's something we need to do, but, you know, does it have to happen today? No. Um, but it's a long, you know, it's a safety thing, that's important, um, and, and, you know, flagged by the, by the state. Maintenance, you know, an example of one is door access control hardware upgrades, like, uh, Tom can attest to this, that we struggle with, uh, door access control issues all the time. Um, we have old wiring that's been spliced together, and so, that's, you know, we call that, or I guess I think of that as a maintenance item. Um, it's very important and, and needs to be done, and needs to be planned for, because it's expensive. But, you know, is it mandatory? I wouldn't say as mandatory as the, as the vents.
And like, replacing a roof, what would replacing a roof be?
So, it's a good question. In most cases, I would say replacement, under the sense of, like, these roofs are at their, at the end of their life and it's time to replace them, but let's say we have a leaking roof that's really bad, and it's leaking into classrooms, and it's causing mold issues, you know, I would put that under mandatory. So it kind of depends on the circumstance.
So there's a lot of things that are in replacement that we really wanna do as replacements. Don't want them to, we, like, the goal is not to get things to mandatory, the goal isn't to, like, wait until we have mold issues in our classrooms, because we've let something that should have been a replacement or a maintenance item become a mandatory item. Does that make sense?
Hmm, okay.
During the budget presentation, we will have, you will have the five-year look, along with a printout of just the, I'm not gonna print out five years of projects, but we'll print out everything that's proposed for twenty-seven, the verbal sheets we're talking about, the word document. So that'll be part of your budget book.
Perfect.
I think we'll go to, unless you have any more questions about the CIP, we'll go to the next, after these slides. Next slide, please. All right, next steps. We're meeting the principals next week. We're gonna have our first flush of the budget, uh, of course, first cry fest to end. Amy says, no, you can't add five people. Just joking. Uh, meet with the board reps and principals the week of twenty-seventh, after Amy's back from the trip they're going on, and you'll see our next topics. Any questions? Thank you.
Uh, one thing. Uh, the meet with board reps, principals, that's an L A G thing, is that right? Or not?
No. That, that is when we meet with the principals of the buildings that we're assigned to, and we talk about their budgets, because we get to our big budget meeting, the theory is that you will be advocates for your specific building, you'll have understood the thinking going into the, their, and you'll ask them questions, and you'll push them on, why are you adding this? Why are you doing this? Can you explain to me this, just so that you understand what it is that they're thinking when they go into their budgets? So whatever building you're assigned to, you'll go meet with those principals.
Great, thank you.
And you should all have received invitations for those meetings, so if you haven't, please, um, let Emma know, and she will make sure we get those invitations sent out again.
So those meetings, I think, are also, I don't know that, you guys have, do they, do we have, um, the... So those meetings, I think, are also, I don't know that you guys have, do they, do we have the mentor? The mentor. Okay, have you guys talked about those meetings yet?
They will.
So I think that those are, those meetings are a great opportunity for, for like to hear what the principals are telling you about like the needs and sort of like the budgets they've put together. And like that's, it's a really good opportunity to get that information and to really like understand it. It's also an opportunity to provide feedback to the principals about sort of like your sense of where the board is and sort of like your, like it's, it's a, it's a, a presentation, I think usually from the principals, but it is also a conversation.
They're all assigned with. Not doing that by yourself. Okay. You're up, next.
Next thing is the school care update. So try to go quickly and thoroughly and not confusingly, but we, school care, there's, we don't have, districts in New Hampshire generally don't use private insurance for healthcare or liability or workers' comp insurance. You can use private insurance. We have a private insurance for our liability. But we use the risk pool for workers' comp. A risk pool is where every, a bunch of people, a bunch of organizations get together, they say, instead of us buying private insurance, we're going to pool our money together and we're going to basically pay claims for that. So we use school care who partners with Cigna. So Cigna basically administers our plan. Claims are paid out of the pool and insurance, the insurance company has to pay those claims and they build it into stuff. So risk pools have been around since the eighties in New Hampshire. Health Trust, its predecessor started, I think, in 85. School care, I'm not sure when it was organized, but a while ago. Things have gone along just fine, but what has happened is that according to, so there's a, you have to keep a reserve, just like you have to keep a reserve for a project you do or whatever. So school care has assessed, their auditors have said that their, they, their pool, the money they have in reserve is too low and they need to assess at least $30 million to all the members of the pool, which we are one of them. So you, you know, most of this stuff. They say that FY '26, the assessed, the pool they had left lost $12 million. They said in the town hall that if they don't, if they don't get more in reserves, then they could be out of, they could be out of cash by April. So none of us like it. There's actually questions that were flowing around from, I think, over in Wentworth School District and others. Like what is the legality of charging this? I can just tell you from my work with the Association of School Business Administrators, that the Secretary of State's office, risk pools are not, are not governed by the insurance department in New Hampshire. They're governed by or regulated by the Secretary of State's office. Secretary of State's office insists that what, how school care is running their pool is the way it's supposed to be run. There's actually some dispute with Health Trust. The other, the other main one for healthcare is called Health Trust. So I know the Secretary of State's office backs what school care is doing because they say that's the way it's supposed to be done. So school care assessed across its members, bills for $30 million. Our portion of it was $1,033,000. And that's what, so we have to pay a million dollars. My plan for paying it is because we have a retained fund balance. Once that is all gone through the Department of Revenue, my numbers for last year have gone through the Department of Revenue. They've signed off on my DOE '25 and it's given us a tax rate. That's when they also approve our retained fund balance. I will come to the board and ask for the board to have a public hearing to use part, most of that retained fund balance to pay that bill. That's the goal. Longer term, we need to talk about how we avoid, whether we build a cap reserve fund for healthcare, whether we see if we're going to get out of the, out of these risk pools, whatever. But obviously we, a surprise assessment in the future would be a bad thing. And school here says they don't anticipate one, but they didn't anticipate this one either. So have any questions?
Before we go to questions too, you guys were made aware as soon as I was made aware of this and I contacted our attorney. So he had said, yeah, there's not many options, but to pay it. But there are some more questions that we have regarding that. So I feel like we have to kind of plan worst case scenario that we need to pay. But I do believe there's some questions that need to be answered. So we intend to connect with Mr. O'Shaughnessy tomorrow. We have a negotiations meeting, so I think we can carve out some time for this. So I just wanted people to, to be aware of that and kind of where we are at moving forward. Obviously, as Tim had mentioned, this is concerning at all levels. We're in a position where we do have some special reserves. There's many of our colleagues around the state are not in these positions and are facing layoffs, billing back employees. And I would say potential lawsuits, all the above. So it's a very concerning situation. It was shared with our city counterparts of where we are at with this. And I've since just have talked to our district leadership team and our building principals and union membership. And for this year too, it is only the beginning of October. And unexpected things happen during the school year. And one unexpected thing could really change the course of where we are. So just asking for everybody within the district to kind of look at purchases moving forward, to making sure that we buy things that are absolutely necessary, that we're going to use this year. We're going to be looking at kind of all line items of, you know, professional learning and travel. But, you know, I think, and looking at the budget, I guess, going forward for next year too. It's, this is a lot. And I think we just need to come together and figure out our next steps forward. And getting more information on the insurance market and our options, I think, is absolutely necessary at this point.
Is there a date attached to this bill at this time?
Sure. On your packet, page 26, I thought I'd share the bill with you that came. I just wanted to notice that the, it's on page 26, but yeah, on, is the email. When we were first notified about this, for some reason, they don't notify the superintendent. So I actually was made aware of a potential cost from another superintendent. So I am glad that they did include the superintendents on these bills, but it does talk about the payment terms. There's a grace period if the interest, no interest is, if it's paid upfront by December 31st. Interest starting January 1st at 0.5% per month on unpaid balances. They're stating what some people are questioning, claims processing, no payment plan or intent to pay is in place by May 1st. Claim payments will be suspended and then final deadline, if unpaid by July 15th, 2026, claims will be denied and covered individuals will be responsible for those costs.
I know this, sorry. I know this is something you might not have an answer to, but if this is something that might be affecting other people in this pool, does that mean there's still a possibility it'll come back with another bill?
That was one of Tim and I's conversation is that, I mean, every district, there's about 90, I think 90 districts in some cities that have school care. And, you know, some of them are considering, no, we're not going to pay that. Or they can't pay that, or for whatever reason, one of our questions is, does that mean we have to eat their costs? We don't have the answer to that. Next week, there is a town hall meeting to talk about rates for next year, but I'm not sure that those questions will be answered for then. I know our business administrators group across the state, which Tim leads that group, has reached out to school care representative to at least get some face time with them. I'm not sure that meeting is going to be able, well, if she'll agree to go. But I think across the state, you know, people are really struggling with this.
Another, sorry. Another question, there's lots of questions that are related to that. Another question is, this was sort of done, assessed based on the number of people you have in, but not based on the number of claims that your people are making, right? So why was that metric chosen? No one knows. And there's several other kinds of things like that. There's also a bunch of people who joined school care or entities, joined school care just recently, right? They're not being assessed because they've just joined, but the assessments from everyone else are making up the pool to which those people will be a part of. There's some equity issues at play. There's lots of questions that are not answered in a satisfactory way.
Yeah, three things. One, I, Tim mentioned the idea of a capital reserve fund for, I don't know what we would call it. Put some money aside for healthcare stuff. In the same way that we have, we have a capital reserve fund, which is basically a place we can put money and we have a special education fund. We have a couple of these where we have a place we can stick money for when we need it. Or a very specific, that's a very crude way of talking about these very specific accounts. But in my mind, those are basically the reason we have them is that they're, these are very expensive things. Capital stuff, special education, these are areas where like stuff is really expensive and it kind of comes up all of a sudden and you can't necessarily predict it. So you want to put money away in anticipation of those things so that you aren't sort of thrown out. So you don't get caught with no money. I really like the idea of pursuing, at least learning some more about looking at creating a health, some kind of a healthcare bank account for ourselves so that we can be putting some money aside to help deal with these issues as they come up in the future. So I think there's a lot of detail that would need to go into that, but, and that would have to be created. We'd have to do, that would have to be, the voters would need to weigh in on that. So there is actually, so if we wanted to do that like this year, if we wanted to put that on the ballot in March, that's something we would need to be talking about soon. But I would, I would like to see us have those conversations about figuring out how we might do that and whether we want to do that. So that's one thing. I'm hoping at some point we are going to investigate or get some information about the financial health of school care. I don't know how, and I, I basically say, let's make sure we're having those conversations however we need to have them. I don't know. Maybe we could talk about that in another area.
I think that was the challenge. Like Tim's been really involved following school care all year this year. So we knew rates were going to increase because they were communicated about that, but there was no really indication that this was going to happen whatsoever, which is, I think, the most concerning thing since it happened the end of September.
So their number, so we're, first of all, I think it's public anyway, but we're, we, we're part owners. So their numbers, they're out of the books in their actuary report, like that's our information. I, I don't know if it's been published yet, but it's something we can get.
Yeah. And I think that, but I think we, and I think we need to, whether it's, whether we need to have our, our team here look at it, whether we need to have Jim O'Shaughnessy, I, I don't know how we go about sort of making some, having some thoughts about that, all of that. But I think that we need to have some thoughts about it. Because when you're, it's a trust in my understanding and basically we're a member of a trust. Yes?
Correct.
Well, you can leave a trust.
If you have another option.
If you have another option, which is.
We are, we are not committed except year by year. Every January I sign that we want to be in it for the next year.
So this is, I think this is something where like, we've, we've been handed a really big bill and we have a lot of questions about why we got it, how we got it, why, why it's so big. And I think that there are also open questions about like, are we going to get more big bills? And et cetera. So I think that like, in my mind, we have until basically, well, we have until May 1st to make those decisions because in theory, obviously like I like paying my bills right when they're due, which is January 1st. But.
Who would have to resign this January, this January, we have to resign with school care if we're going to use school care.
Okay. Yeah.
We have, so yeah, I would say till the end of December, right? Cause we have to, January 1st, that we'd have to.
I mean, it's signed in the January, I don't, I don't know what the due date is, but you, we have to know by January because if we're not going to do it with school care, there's months of work to do to find someone else, like five months worth of work. And I don't mind going, I'm going to go down that road anyway. But I, you know, we got to know what we're doing before.
And I think too, is just for transparency, like some of our CBA language too, is that we have to look at some of the CBA language. CBA language to see how tied we are to that on each of them. Or some of the language says like an equitable plan. So then we'd have to research to get something equitable.
It's a good thing that we have so much time in the fall when we have very little else to do, to do all these things.
The timing is the most frustrating thing to me. I wanted to say one thing about premium holidays. So school care is operating, if this law, they, they references RSA 5-B. It's weird how school care and Health Trust have different interpretations. School care is operating under the interpretation that the Secretary of State insisted, which is that you need to have a risk pool and assessment that's between 12 and 16% of your estimated, basically 12 to 16% of reserve. Anything more than that, they consider it, there was a big lawsuit that started in 2011, I think, with the firefighters against local government center. So that lawsuit led to you can't keep too much money in reserve. So school care for years and Health Trust has been giving money back because they've had more than a, the issue is that Health Trust thinks you need 20 to 25%. School care has been running this 12 to 16 window. So, and we've gotten, I mean, $300,000, $400,000 back in a discount off of our premium. So we get a bill in Jan, in July, it says your bill's $800 minus $300, $300,000 in premium. We pay less. So they've been giving all that money back for 10 years. And now the, the issue is 12 isn't enough. So it is unfortunate they couldn't bank some of that premium holiday to pay for the lean times. But that's, that's how the premium holidays have benefited us in the past. Not that it helps us now, it doesn't, but.
Leila, you had a question?
I was wondering how realistic the timeline is if we're kind of now working off of, it's the, the grace period of no interest if paid by December 31st. With addition to the fact that if we're signing on, it's January 1st. This is October. And we're also particularly, Amy and Tim, it's not like everything else stops because this bill came. You guys are still keeping many ships at the moment.
My vision in my time, in my head for timeline, see if the board agrees. We pay this bill sometime in December after we have a public hearing in November. Right? I've confirmed that my retained balance is right. Pay the bill, starting January, we start engaging different firms that I'm aware of, other companies. They're going to want a whole, they're going to want a whole bunch of information on our medical use. And we, between January and roughly March, we get all the information together we need for them to give us a bid. We'll get bids by, you know, April, May, maybe from Health Trust. We already know school care because it would have given us it. And hopefully I have two or, two or three other options. And then we either, we either bring it to the board, either we act it for July 1, say school care goodbye, or maybe we don't, or we wait, we do it in a year. Like I, to me, we need to have options that are best for the district, but I don't think we need to be rushed to do something July 1. Maybe we live with school care for another year, whatever it might be. I don't know how, it's going to take three to four months to get information from school care. Hey, then let us know about our usage and two different vendors to give us. And then they're going to rate it through their actuaries and that just takes time.
All while the risk of us getting another bill next year. That's a realistic. Yeah, it's a realistic, they say it's not going to happen, but like, as we said, I'm not sure. When all these people and their payment plans.
The other hard place we're between is that we can say no. What are you going to do to us? But if they run out of money like they say they're going to, then all of, all of employees' claims are going to be denied.
We really can't say no because we're not in a position to be able to do that. Then we'd be breaking all of our contracts.
Yeah, I appreciate all the, the work going into this unexpected headache. So thank you so much.
All right. Compost?
This is really no big deal. I, I just meant to let Amy know that we had an inspection the other day and our compost wasn't up to spec. So for like a week, 10 days, we had no composting, back up and running. We got to make sure it's covered. We get fruit fries. That's a subject that.
Great. Okay. All right, that brings us to unfinished business. We have some second reading of policies. Tia, do you want to be the, the motion maker for these?
Sure.
Ash is out.
Should I ask if any pulled out first? All right, would anybody like to pull out any of these policies?
So this is the second reading. You have seen these before.
They were largely to stay up to date with current laws.
Right. Nope.
All right. I will make a motion to approve policies through 9A, 1 through 3A.
Seconded.
Actually, just 1 through 3.
1 through 3?
Yeah.
Nevermind. All right, I amend to just 1 through 3.
Motion made to Tia, second by Joe, any comments on the policies? All right, all those in favor? Great unanimous?
I just want to talk about 3A. These are the subcommittee meeting templates, so we just passed BEDG about meeting minutes. So there are some requirements that people to look at. So for those that take meeting notes, I can send the template for you, but these are the components of there. I would like to ask the board if everyone is willing to move to diligent for their agendas and their meeting minutes. And I'm shooting for maybe January as a goal. I think we, finance and facility, I can at least get the agendas going there first. I have most access to the training for that, and then I can work with Karen, with EC, and the other committee members. I think SWAC might be, a couple of those ones that are giant, they might not, they might have to stay in the, the Google realm. Just that there's not access like a superintendent from, or on that committee, so.
I have also been using diligent for the policy minutes, so if anybody has any questions, you can reach out.
It's very user-friendly terms, like in terms of motions, you just click and go, and it's nice because actually, I'm trying to build the bud, the meeting agenda for the 27th, 22nd, and I was able to look at Tia's minutes to make sure my policies have been moved over. So I do think there'll be some efficiencies there, and so I think if we can target that as a group, it would be great moving forward.
Sounds good. All right, new business? I don't believe we have any. We'll go back to public comment, is there any public comment in the room? None, is there any online?
If you, oh, yes, we do, we have public comment online. Okay, Faith, thank you, hold on, I'm going to allow you to talk here. All right, Faith.
Hello. Thank you for the public comment, and thank you for providing the Zoom, continuing to provide Zoom access. I got a bunch of dishes done, so just, thank you very much.
Can you state your name and ward for the minutes, please?
Yes, Faith Henrickson, Ward 2.
Thank you.
And that's it, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else online?
No other public comment.
Okay, perfect. All right, we'll close public comment. And we will do, yeah, committee updates. Finance and facilities, next meeting is on October 29th at 4:00 PM at the SAU. Policy committee met on October 6th, we just talked about that. And the next meeting is November 10th at 8:15 AM, the minutes are in the packet. EC, so EC, we've had, we're supposed to be meeting tomorrow, we've had some complications. Karen is proposing that we just move to a different week. She is suggesting, she is suggesting the 16th or the 30th? See, people want to just look at their calendars real quick.
I prefer the 16th.
I cannot do the 16th.
I can't do the 16th.
Okay.
The 30th at the same time, let me see.
The 30th I can do, but I have the, we have the budget meeting, but we could go after, now?
I can make it happen, that's fine.
Okay, we'll, we'll send an email, potentially, yes, but just look for that, all right.
It would just need to be earlier, it's early release, isn't it?
Yeah, there's teacher conferences that day.
Okay.
Yeah.
We will look at our schedules.
Could we potentially start at 11:30, or would you like, yep, we have a budget meeting, I think, MLS.
Until 11?
Till 11?
Right.
Yep, so we could, even 11:15, maybe we could.
Okay.
Try to do that, okay, perfect.
Look, check your, check your emails. There will be some information coming. All right, PNN met yesterday, and, or two days ago and today, we're going to talk about this in non-public. And the next meeting is scheduled for October 22nd at 4:15 at the library.
Actually tomorrow.
Oh, it's actually tomorrow.
We just added a new meeting.
Added a new meeting, all right.
And for 22nd.
And the 22nd, yes.
October 9th, what time on the 9th?
2:00 PM.
Okay.
SAU.
Uh, SAU, thank you. SWAC, the next meeting is December 4th. LHS, AJCC met on October 1st, we've, we have that.
Sure, we had a meeting with Hartford, we talked, they have asked us about our budget situations for this year. We all agreed we prefer not to have a rate increase. They shared some calendar dates, we shared that New Hampshire is trying to propose that we go back to school after Labor Day. We also let them know about our school start time committee. They're willing to hear information. They are, I'm not sure if you saw in the Valley News, Hartford, Woodstock, and Windsor. As Vermont is looking at restructuring their educational system, they did say that they would be potentially willing to join, which is a good time for us because there are, those districts all go to Hartford with us, so we'd still seem to have a spot there. And then we had a really long conversation about, for those that have not been to the, the Career and Technical Center, it is located at Hartford High School. They were talking about potentially sort of, in theory, separating the technical center from the high school and that the Career and Technical Center would be billing, I'm sorry, the Hartford School District would be billing the Career and Technical Center for use of space. So it, for us, and the other superintendents and board reps, there's a lot of questions about why would such do that? And would that mean if they had construction projects in the future at the Career and Technical Center, would that mean bill backs for us? So we said that we would definitely need more information before any decisions would be made, and all of us would need to consider what that meant legally for us. So I, we will follow up at the next meeting on November 12th.
Amy, I, I don't know if you heard, there's some talks with Hartford School District combining with Windsor and Mountain Views. That's what you're talking about, okay, just wanted to make sure they were.
Saying that, it's for groups that are joining, they're good because all of them go to the Career and Technical Center. Our worry was that if, when the state re-district, that we would be left without a Career and Technical Center nearby.
All right, area committee, the next meeting is scheduled for October 21st at 6:00 PM at Plainfield. The School District City Task Force, are, we were all at our joint meeting on October 1st. The next meeting is actually on November 20th at 6:00 PM, I think. And that task force, one of the things that came out of our joint board meeting is that that task force will be meeting monthly at least through March, so that we can talk about some of the issues that were brought up at our meeting, in particular, use of the SAU building and land swap potential, all of those kinds of things, so.
I think those on the task force should have received those invites through, through March. So I think we, we may look at that March 10th, because it's voter election day, and it would actually be, yeah. It'd be probably a difficult time to be meeting at City Hall.
Yes. All right, and then the Housing Task Force, next meeting is scheduled for October 20th, 8:15 AM, okay. All right, so we are going to go into non-public, you're going to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion for us to go into non-public under RSA 91A 32A.
Okay, motion by John.
Second.
Second by Jessica, it's a roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Joe?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Leila?
Yes.
Okay, we are going into non-public at 8:09.
Call the board meeting back to order at 8:50. We do not have any, are there any future agenda items, board member recommendations or questions? No, all right. Our next school board meeting is October 22nd at 6:30 PM here at LMS. And that is all. Can I get a motion to adjourn?